Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, May eighteenth. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Miscman?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mayor Adel Osley?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Menzger?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. First on the agenda this evening, we have two proclamations. The first one is regarding American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Days. I've asked Councilmember Sterned to present the proclamation, and do we have someone here from the American Legion to receive that? Okay, please come forward. Thank you.
So whereas freedom is a privilege to be treasured by all residents of the city of Marion, and whereas this privilege has not been free, but carries with it immeasurable sacrifices by our veterans, and whereas in yearly observation of said sacrifices, I hereby honor the veterans and their importance to the preservation of our freedoms, and whereas the poppy is a symbol of remembrance for all veterans who serve this country and aid the living veterans and their families. Now therefore, I Randy Sterned, on behalf of Nicholas Abou Osley, Mayor of City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May nineteenth and twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Days, and urge all residents of the city of Marion to pause and honor our veterans by wearing the poppy, the American Legion Auxiliary's memorial flower.
My name is Amy Pazarek. I have been president of my auxiliary since 2019, so we went through some quiet years. But the incoming president Lori Akenbach, thank you, Akenbach, will be coming in and taking my place here this year. And Susan Costello is the membership chair for, or membership and poppy chair. So she is the one that's organizing the chaos. I just wanted to let you know that your money means a lot. We have gathered, we raised almost ninety-six hundred dollars last year. It went all back, it all went back into the community for the veterans. We donated to the Freedom Foundation, the HACAP Homeless Vets Program, the Iowa City Vets Hospital, with most of the money coming back to the Cedar Rapids Clinic, Willis Dade's Homeless Veterans Program, the VA Resource Center, now on First Avenue. And we also did a visit and did a donation to the Marshalltown, um, home. Brain stop. Anyway, please donate. If you see a poppy person out distributing, please, that money goes right back into the community. Thank you.
Thank you. The second proclamation is for Kids to Parks Day. Do we have anyone here from the Parks Department to accept it?
Your Honor, we have Ally Waterman, who's our Recreation Program Coordinator here to accept the proclamation.
Okay, whereas May twentieth, twenty twenty-three is the thirteenth Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust and is held annually on the third Saturday in May. And whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands and waters, and whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes and hypertension. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will help to broaden children's appreciation of, for nature and the outdoors. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will promote the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abou Osley, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May twentieth, twenty twenty-three as Kids to Parks Day in Marion, and encourage all residents to celebrate by taking the children in their lives to a neighborhood, city, state or national park.
Thank you. Kids to Park Day is a national day of outdoor play celebrated on the third Saturday of May. It is promoted by the National Recreation and Park Association and the National Park Trust to connect kids and families with parks. In Marion, we will celebrate Kids to Park Day this Saturday, May twentieth, at the Great American Kite Event at the Lau Park All Diamonds. There will be a giant kite display, an inflatable bounce house, an obstacle course and other fun activities. It'll be a fun day for the whole family, so come on out and enjoy the, enjoy the outdoors with us. Thank you.
Now we have a special presentation, Community Life Saving Award presentation, and Deputy Chief, will put one like the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tonight is my honor to recognize two Marion residents for their life-saving actions earlier this spring. On March eighth, a customer of Menards was in the back lot when he suddenly collapsed to the ground. Bystanders Nick Martin and Menards staff member Nicholas Oxley witnessed the event and took action. Please step forward if I read your name. Mr. Oxley may not be with us tonight, but this is Nick Martin. Mr. Martin directed Mr. Oxley to begin chest compressions while he called nine-one-one and directed other staff to notify the gate attendant. These are the first two lengths in the American Heart Association Chain of Survival. Bystander recognition and action plus activating nine-one-one increases the chance of survival by three times. CPR continued until first responders arrived on scene. Tonight, the city of Marion will be recognizing these two with a life-saving award, but first I'd like to introduce the rest of the responding team and have them come forward as well. Marion Police Officer Gabe Calkbrenner was the first to arrive and took over CPR as others began to arrive as well. Area Ambulance Service Staff Members Dirk Auba and Michaela Yoder were the next on scene. They assumed patient care and began advanced measures as Marion Fire also arrived. Lieutenant Tyler Monanock and firefighters Nate Rowe and Pacer Langith were the responding crew. It took every one of these members to assist in the taxi call, but without the initial action of the two nicks, the outcome could have been much different. Before we hand out the plaques and Officer Calkbrenner's pin, it is my pleasure to introduce the surviving patient Gary Severs. Please join me in congratulating Nick Martin and Nicholas Oxley for their life-saving actions. Nick, there's a plaque from the mayor and the city. We also have Officer Calkbrenner's life-saving pin for his uniform as well. You all want to scooch together a little bit and? Council, I have a second recognition to provide this evening. It's related to a statistics previously mentioned. However, this incident was a little different. At this time, I'd like to introduce Blake Walker and invite him to the front of the room, please. On April twenty-sixth, Blake was working for Hy-Vee and serving lunch at Encore Cafe at Lau Park when a patron began having difficulty breathing. The patron stood and made their way to the restroom. Blake had a great deal of situational awareness at the time, and with that intuition, he followed the person down the hallway and waited outside the restroom. When the patient returned, they showed the universal sign of choking by holding their hands to their throat. Blake immediately asked him to turn around and administered the Heimlich maneuver a few times to dislodge the obstruction. Had he not done so, this person would have been within minutes or seconds of unconsciousness. I commend Blake for being aware of his surroundings and having the courage to act. It is my pleasure to award this life-saving plaque to Blake Walker. Thank you.
Thank you all. Those are wonderful and well-deserved recognitions. The next item is a public forum, which is a time set aside for questions for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. Uh, any comments on items that are, uh, that are part of a public hearing will be, could be made during the public hearing, and then there'll be another time for comments on other items at the end of the meeting. At this time, we'll take comments on any item that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. Yeah, no, no problem. You're welcome. Please stand in front of the mic, state your name and address. Yes.
Molly Mulherin, Levette, forty forty-two Kinderhook Lane here in Marion. Um, speaking to you because I'm very, very strongly opposed to Dollar Tree coming into our neighborhood. Uh, my husband would be here also, but he's coaching baseball with our youth, Marion youth, so, um, one of the biggest things is I use Dollar Tree. I'm a teacher. That's what we use. We like cheap, but that's just it. It's cheap product. The houses around it are not cheap. Our taxes are not cheap. When you go into the store recently, I've used the Marion quite a bit and the First Avenue. When I walk in, it's a mess, and both times, two different staff, they've been arguing with each other in both locations. So if you have staff members that are not invested in their employment, why would we expect them to be invested in keeping our neighborhoods clean, to being a part of our neighborhoods? So I am asking you not to, I don't know the process exactly, but that is something I'm asking strongly not to have in our neighborhood. There's a petition going around, and already there's three hundred twenty-four signatures on it opposing it, and we are asking the city council to not have this. We already have one in Marion. Why do we need two? And why in this neighborhood? It doesn't, it's not part of what these neighborhoods are, these expensive homes, high taxes, all of that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone have a comment or an item to address council? Please come forward. Yes. Go ahead and turn in the card and then please state your name and address and proceed. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, my name is Erin Moran, and I live at forty-two Barrington Parkway. Uh, I too am in support of the moratorium on Dollar Tree and deep discount stores. Um, as I reviewed the, and I did send an email earlier today, um, so I just kind of wanted to reiterate and make it very public. You know, Marion's been our home for over ten years. Um, we came to, from Cedar Rapids to Marion based on the quality schools, the good neighborhoods, purchased a home that backs up the tower terrorists. Have kind of been through this process here and there over the years, and as we continue to understand that the ordinances have changed and we've accepted that, um, we still take great pride in our community and our neighborhood. And given the, uh, I don't even know what to call it, but, um, the standards that Dollar Tree provides to their employees, low pay, uh, high turnover jobs, that doesn't provide a, a, a community that we want to be a part of. Um, we want opportunities for Marion residents that are invested in that area. Um, so that's one. They are notorious for high crime because of their low staffing. Um, they have one of the largest, uh, Shannon actually, uh, put that in the moratorium, and you know, I can sit here and tell you all the things that she already told you. Um, I think she did it very eloquently and made a very good case as to why we don't feel that this is a, a good place for Dollar Tree in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You state your name and address.
Um, Sonia Regals. I live at seven five seven Eastview Avenue in Marion. Um, my backyard also faces the Dollar Tree, uh, proposed location, and I understand it's not a residential area. You know, we all know that Dollar Tree is a, a, a national chain. I don't understand why we need another store. Um, there's already about four or five discount stores, three Dollar Trees within a three-point-five mile radius of that location. I don't understand why Company Virginia has to have another store. Most of us can drive, most of us can get there. The closest one from that location is two miles away, so it's not, we're not talking a long distance. Uh, number two, the area has changed since my understanding of the development of the area. Right now, we have the Y, beautiful facility. We have the fire station, beautiful building. The Dollar Tree aesthetic does not fit, you know, so if we wanted to have a store like a Dollar Tree, I will insist that, like, you know, make it look nice. We have something nice. Marion's motto is rich higher. Putting a chain store in that location does not, um, it does, it just doesn't look like aesthetic. This is a corridor between the middle schools and the high school and the Y. Our children are going to be walking from one place to the other. Do we want them stopping at Dollar Tree and buying low goods, low quality goods, sugary drinks? They don't sell healthy snacks. The area needs to be developed, but it needs to be developed with, uh, good businesses, good local businesses. A tutoring business will do great there, you know, uh, 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 a karate dojo would do great, Pilates studios, doctor's offices. There's a, a long list of things that will be wonderful addition to Marion that will make it look higher, that when people move from out of the state or out of the area to the Cedar Rapids metro area, they'll say, we want to live in Marion. We don't want to live in Cedar Rapids. We don't want to live in, um, Swooshers. We want to live in Marion. And I think that is very, you know, it goes back to garbage in and garbage out. You know, if you, if you bring in a, a company that doesn't care about their employees, that doesn't provide its own security, that there's no deterrent for theft because it's low cost, all that is going to cost our already strained police department to have to go and deal with that situation. At Kids to Mix, who knows what's going to happen? So I really do think, and I know this is moratorium about discount stores, I agree with that as a whole, but I definitely agree with that. You know, not in my backyard, just because it's not a good location. That location has so much potential. It's a corridor for the youth, for our future. You know, I would love nothing more than to see maybe the library and putting a location there for the kids, so they don't have to come all the way downtown. There's so much potential. Let's just not ruin it by having a discount dollar store that doesn't add any value to our community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Welcome. Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Shannon Trader, five ninety-two Barrington Parkway in Marion. I'm the person that submitted the moratorium request. Um, I did speak to most of you a couple of weeks ago, so I just wanted to thank you for your consideration and putting us on the agenda this evening. Um, I know that there were some people that sent in emails as well. Today, I did go around to, um, the two-dollar generals and the Dollar Tree that we already have in Marion and submitted photos, which I think you probably have as well. Um, I just also wanted to reiterate that there's a lot of neighborhood support behind this moratorium, and a lot of people couldn't make it tonight. Um, I found out a week ago, we could be on the agenda, and we have a lot of people that are graduating from high school and kindergarten and preschool tonight, and lots of baseball games, and so, um, I just wanted to let you know that there is a lot of support here, even though there's not a huge amount of people here that wanted to be present, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Katie Lau Lancaster. I live at five zero zero four North Tenth Street in Marion. I have lived and North Tenth Street for almost my entire life. I have raised my family of six there, and I currently live right in the backyard of Lau Park every single day. I have championed, championed every capital campaign at Lau Park since the first day the farm was gifted to the city of Marion. I am the daughter of George and Alice Lau, and I speak not only for my family, but I speak for Alice Lau tonight. Thank you to the city, to the city council and the citizens of Marion for your continued dedication to developing a welcoming, inclusive and amazing park named after my parents, George and Alice Lau, and their families. In the spirit of dutiful stewardship, I ask that you table the Lau Park Master Plan as presented. As stated in my letter to the city council, I'm requesting additional conversations and research to resolve the concerns regarding the Lau Park Master Plan. Please consider my request. I make this on behalf of myself, my families, my mother on this very evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward. You will ask the city clerk if we received any comments outside the meeting?
We did see, uh, receive one email prior to the meeting from Carolyn Kevin Lewenhagen at three ninety-two Barrington Parkway. They also wrote in support of the moratorium request.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address council before we move on to the next segment? Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. This will include items A one through G one and resolution numbers three one, three seven six through three one, four oh two. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items eight point one through G one, resolutions thirty-one, three seventy-six through three one, four zero two. Discussion?
Yeah, just a clarifying question, Your Honor, on, so tonight for the Lau Park Master Plan, we're simply receiving and filing it, correct? We're not making any decision to accept the plan, right?
Yeah, the, the agenda item is to simply receive and file the report, uh, and the, the proposal, and, um, it does not constitute approval or acceptance of it in, in any way. Is that correct, Ryan?
You said it very well, dear.
Thank you.
So it still allows for discussion, and I mean, that's, that's to come.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. For the next section, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mayor pro tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osley's abstention as follows. Items B one through F one, resolutions three one, four zero three to three one, four one zero.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention, encompassing items B one through F one, resolutions thirty-one, four oh three through thirty-one, four ten. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda as, with the mayor's abstention as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Back to the mayor.
We're on the regular agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero eight, amending chapter three five-five of the Code of Ordinances regarding electric franchise with Interstate Power and Light Company, Alliant Energy, including the addition of franchise fees. Second consideration.
Second. We moved in second it to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero eight. The, amending chapter three fifty-five of the Code of Ordinances regarding electric franchise with Interstate Power and Light Company, including the addition of franchise fees. This is the second consideration. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to, to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance for number twenty-three dash zero eight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero eight. Any discussion on suspending the rules?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
Just if we could clarify, uh, the basis for that suspension of rules, uh, is, um, founded in what? Again, just to remind me.
Yes, um, so the, um, with Alliant and Mid-American Energy, this is really to allow us to time the, um, Alliant has a six-week, uh, they have a six-week processing time, Mid-American has sixty days. Uh, to, if we do this, Alliant also has a cutoff of the fifteenth of the month. So this just allows us to be fair and equitable across the board for all utility pairs that this will start approximately within days of each other at the same, so within a couple of days. If it was not, then you're talking about two or three weeks, so some pairs would be paying this earlier rather than later. So it's equitable.
Okay, and that, that's applicable then to some of our following actions here in our agenda. Okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks for that. Any further discussion on suspending the rules? Okay, all those in favor of suspending the rules and proceeding to the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, the motion is approved, so Mr. Sterned, would you make the motion to, for the final consideration approval then? Oh, okay, sorry.
I would be happy, I would be happy to. I was just pausing there for clarification.
You're correct, so it's, go ahead.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero eight, amending chapter three hundred fifty-five of the Code of Ordinances regarding electric franchise with Interstate Power and Light Company, Alliant Energy, including the addition of franchise fees. Final consideration.
Second. Second. We moved in second it to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 23-08, amending chapter 355 of the code regarding electric franchise with Interstate Power and Light Company, including the addition of franchise fees. Discussion on the final consideration? Okay, all those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number 23-08, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 23-09, amending chapter 355 of the Code of Ordinances regarding electric franchise with Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative Association, Lynn County REC, including the addition of franchise fees, and this is the second consideration.
Second. We moved in second it to approve ordinance number 23-09, amending chapter 355 of the code regarding electric franchise with Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative Association, including the addition of franchise fees. Discussion? All those in favor of the second consideration, approving the second consideration of ordinance number 23-09, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 23-09.
Second. We moved in second it to suspend the rules and move to the final consideration of ordinance number 23-09. Discussion on suspending the rules? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 23-09, amending chapter 355 of the Code of Ordinances regarding electric franchise with Lynn County Rural Electric, Electric Cooperative Association, Lynn County REC, including the addition of franchise fees. Final consideration.
Second. To move in second it to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 23-09, amending chapter 355 of the Code of Ordinances regarding electric franchise with Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative Association, including the addition of franchise fees. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number 23-09, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 23-10, amending chapter 360 of the Code of Ordinances regarding natural gas franchise with Mid-American Energy Company, including the addition of franchise fees. Second consideration.
Second. We moved in second it to approve the second consideration of ordinance number 23-10, amending chapter 360 of the Code of Ordinances regarding natural gas franchise with Mid-American Energy Company, including the addition of franchise fees. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the second consideration of ordinance number 23-10, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 23-10.
Second.
We moved in second it to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 23-10. Discussion on suspending the rules? Okay, all those in favor of suspending the rules and moving to the final consideration on ordinance number 23-10, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 23-10, amending chapter 360 of the Code of Ordinances regarding natural gas franchise with Mid-American Energy Company, including the addition of franchise fees. Final consideration.
Second. It's been moved in second it to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 23-10, amending chapter 360 of the code regarding natural gas franchise with Mid-American Energy Company, including the addition of franchise fees. Discussion on the final consideration?
Yeah, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
This, this item is similar to the sequence of other actions we've just taken, and I just perhaps wanted to clarify my understanding of, of all of this. This is in order to help us support our fire department staffing, um, in, in order to make sure that we have adequate coverage for the, um, the shifts that we need to support. Was there anything else over and above fire that that was, uh, that was supporting? Was that also for, for PD or just fire?
This is fire and PD.
Okay, all right. So, so the emphasis of these actions is, is to support our first responders. So, um, that certainly makes sense to me. Okay, thanks. I just wanted to get that benchmarked.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number 23-10, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 23-11, amending various sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances, and this is the second consideration.
Second. It's been moved in second it to approve the second consideration of ordinance number 23-11, amending various sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve a liquor, liquor licenses, including the following: New St. Joseph's Catholic Church Fundays, 1790 14th Street.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second it to approve a liquor license for the St. Joseph Catholic Church Fundays. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
Please note that Sternad will abstain.
Okay. Motion is approved with one abstention.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 31411, approving a contract with Census Gatto to provide an automatic, automated traffic camera program.
Second. It's been moved in second it to approve resolution number 31411, approving the contract with Census Gatto to provide an automated traffic camera program. Discussion? Chief, do you have something to?
Yes, sir. I had some answers to the questions that came up Tuesday evening at the work session. As far as repairs go, um, the service agreement will establish a hotline number for us that we can contact after hours for software and equipment defects. Um, they've put in there that they will return a call or an email within an hour. As far as actual repairs, um, there's a clause in there that states, uh, they will make reasonable, commercially reasonable efforts to notify us and initiate repairs within 72 hours for equipment damage, defects, or other issues. Uh, as far as the license plate reader, they can add the LPR capability. It would be $300 per month, uh, per direction. They can do that at any time. Uh, they're willing to pilot a program at one of the intersections, so we can determine whether that's something we want to move forward with in the future. Um, and, uh, as far as the retention of images, uh, basically that's going to be up to us, uh, when we put in our business plans. They said they'll keep them up to five years, uh, but it's going to be up to us to say when they delete them. Typically with our body camera footage, if we don't have an incident, incident or a case, that goes away after two years, and I would think this would be similar. Um, if it's not a violation, it's not retained anyway. So I think that was all three questions I had, unless somebody's got...
Were there other questions for the chief?
Yeah. Chief, um, so one of the things that, uh, came to my attention was a concern about image quality, um, and as, as the citation is reviewed by the recipient, um, can you give a little clarity on how a, a poorly rendered image would be handled relative to the citation?
Correct. So when, uh, when a citation goes out, there'll be a link on there. Uh, the car owner who gets the citation can go online and actually watch the video. Uh, I, I know the, um, comments you were referring to, the, the gentleman said that's what he did, and it was actually clearer on the video, uh, from our perspective, and I think from the company's perspective, if it's not, if we're not entirely sure the plate number, there will be no citation issue.
Okay.
And that's going to happen from time to time.
Okay, so that's a, in essence, a quality control measure that we're invoking.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other discussion? So I assume this remains your recommendation, chief?
Yes, sir.
Other discussion? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number 31411, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 31412, approving the central corridor review for property located at 660 and 684 10th Street, Marion, Iowa, the Sonic Temple Association.
Second. It's been moved in second it to approve resolution number 31412, approving the central corridor review for the property at 660 and 684 10th Street. Discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number 31412, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved. Next is a public hearing regarding the request for partial demolition of the Marion Depot Pavilion, located at 1001 7th Avenue, within the Downtown Commercial Historic District, commonly referred to as the Uptown Historic District. I would just clarify that this is not demolition of the pavilion, but part of the renovations is part of the, um, improvements that are being made with the Plaza Project. Okay, do we have anyone here to address counsel on this subject, either in favor or in opposition? The public hearing is now open. Please come forward. Okay, seeing that no one's coming forward, we'll, uh, close the public hearing. We'll ask the clerk if any comments have been received outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
Okay, thank you. Please note that in the record. I didn't provide you an opportunity to make a presentation, so do you have a presentation to make? Sorry. I just remembered.
I think the staff report's pretty thorough. It covered everything. Unless you have something more detailed, I'd be happy to give it, but...
Okay.
Can you just, for the record, talk about what is actually being, uh, demoed as part of this? Just so that everyone listening can...
Okay. Well, the original depot was built in 1888. As I think most of us know, it was moved in the late eighties over to the park from its original site. Um, and at that time, around 1988, the restrooms and storage room were added on to the west side of the building. So we're looking at a 1988 addition that we're removing. Um, our ordinance does not discriminate. If it's in a historic district, it's considered potentially historic or may someday be historic. Um, so we, uh, we review them all. Uh, as part of the demolition review, uh, the council and the Stock Preservation Commission and the city council is looking at whether the proposed area for demolition is historic or architectural significance to the community, and whether the denial of the proposed demolition would prevent the property owner, uh, the city, from earning a reasonable economic return on the property. So the depot is considered non-contributing to the historic district, and this was done by our consultant back in 2007, uh, 2008, I'm sorry. Um, and it was considered non-contributing, so it's, yes, it's there, but it does not add any value to the historic district in terms of the national register standards. So it is not deemed historic, uh, and especially the 1988 addition even more so. And then the second point again was the economic return. Um, it's a non, the city's essentially nonprofit. It doesn't generate income, so there's no income data to drive from this property, so, uh, it doesn't need that assessment either. Um, so again, the Stock Preservation Commission met last, almost, I'm sorry, two months ago, uh, because we have 14-day lead times on notices for these, and they did recommend approval. At that meeting, we had, uh, notified 44 property owners, um, as well as 14-day notice in the Gazette, as well as a sign on the property for 14 days, and, uh, did not receive any comments for, against the request.
Okay, thank you. It's also important to note that, that's not the actual original depot. It's the roof structure and the bricks from the depot that were used to build this pavilion. So... Okay, any... The, the public hearing is now closed, so we'll move on to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 31413, approving the partial demolition of the Marion Depot Pavilion located at 1001 7th Avenue, within the Downtown Commercial Historic District, commonly referred to as the Uptown Historic District.
Second.
It's been moved in second it to approve resolution number 31413, approving the partial demolition of the Marion Depot Pavilion located at 1007 7th Avenue in the Downtown Commercial District. Discussion? Further questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so Dave, just, just, uh, again, kind of on the theme of what got moved, it was really back in 19, what, 88?
Correct.
The, the roof of the original depot got moved.
The roof and some bricks.
Okay, so that, that, um, is the basis for the non-contributing determination?
Correct.
Okay, and then, uh, this, this maybe is more for Seth than Dave. Um, did this section that we're, um, proposing to go ahead and, uh, demo as part of the park, overall park project, did that section, uh, have any, uh, duration damage, uh, that, uh, it suffered?
Yeah, the whole depot had, the roof had, uh, traditional damage, um, in which that one specifically had a, a section of new awning, uh, and then the rest of it was a lot of new shingles, so...
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number 31413, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing on the request for removal of the caboose located at 1007 7th Avenue in the Downtown Commercial Historic District. Public hearing is now open, and we have a presentation, a brief one as well. Uh, the same standards apply, whether it's historic or not, and whether there's an economic return, just like the previous case. Um, the caboose was placed in the, uh, Marion Park in the mid-1980s, along with the relocation of the depot roof, of course, to create the depot pavilion. Uh, since that time, we've gone through a lot of work to develop the park plaza, and, um, part of that park plaza does impact the location of the caboose. Uh, the city council has directed staff to look at the railroad park, is where I'm referring to it right now, uh, for an area located east of 31st Street, which is just south of the American Legion, uh, to move the, um, caboose to. While we're not demoing the caboose, a removal is considered demolition by our definition, so that's why we are bringing it forward tonight. Um, just for the folks that may be listening, the caboose is a former Crandic caboose, Northeastern Caboose, so it's not a Milwaukee Railroad caboose. Um, so it served areas between Cedar Rapids and Iowa City, uh, never served in Marion. Uh, however, while it never was in Marion until it got placed in the park, it has been identified, it's, it's not part of its local history, uh, but it does represent Marion's historic ties to the railroad and the importance the railroad played in the community's early growth and development. Um, the National Park Service does recognize caboosees as artifacts and something that should be preserved. That said, it is non-contributing to the historic district because it never, never had a, a place in Marion's history physically, uh, but it does, again, represent what we were or had. Uh, so it does encourage the preservation of the caboose. As the council's aware, um, on the next item, uh, there's plans to relocate the caboose, uh, again, to the Leacham Park area, I'm sorry, to the American Legion site to south there, and, uh, have approximately $49,552 of improvements made to the caboose as part of its moving, and then additional dollars, uh, with the development of that little park area. Uh, so the, so the city is planning to, of course, uh, preserve, uh, preserve the caboose for future generations to appreciate. Uh, same as the depot, uh, restrooms, this did go to the, uh, History Preservation Commission, same notice went out. Um, actually, I think it was the same notice both times, uh, and there was no opposition for or against it, and the commission did recommend approval. Thank you. Is there anyone here to address counsel on this item, either in favor or in opposition? Please come forward. Okay, seeing that no one's coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. Ask the city clerk if any comments have been received outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
Okay. Note that for the record, and we'll move on to the vote. Note that for the record and we'll move on to the vote.
Mayor, I move to approve us, resolution number three, one, four, one, four, approving a request for the removal of the caboose. Located at one oh oh one Seventh Ave within the downtown commercial historic district, commonly referred to as the Uptown Historic District.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three, one, four, one, four, approving the request for removal of the caboose located at one zero zero seven Seventh Avenue. In the downtown commercial historic district. Discussion?
Your honor?
Yes.
Yeah, so just, uh, to dovetail on what, uh, Dave provided during the hearing. I, I appreciate the fact that you kind of outlined the lineage of the caboose itself. Crandic, uh, made to look like Milwaukee Road. But, uh, what I think is very significant about this action is the proposed relocation of it, that, that, uh, spot at the, uh, at the Legion, uh, in that area. As best I could tell through some research I did, appears to be where our old, um, uh, rail yards used to be. Um, and so it's, it, it seems to be a pretty fitting location. To be, uh, lo- relocated there because that was sort of an epicenter of rail activity, a- as was our depot. But that also is an area, uh, that has a historical, um. I guess, uh, significance to the, to the city of Marion, so, uh, if that's where it's going, I think that's appropriate.
Other discussion? Hey, all those in favor of approving resolution number three, one, four, one, four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three, one, four, one, five, approving contract with Wabtec Inc. For the refurbishment of the caboose and authorizing payment in the amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Second.
Removed in seconded to approve resolution number three, one, four, one, five, approving contract with Wabtec Inc. For refurbishing the caboose and authorizing payment in the amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. Discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number three, one, four, one, five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. For the next item, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, your honor, uh.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to receive and file a request for a moratorium related to the development of dollar stores, deep discount stores in the city of Marion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive and file a request for a moratorium related to the development of dollar stores, deep discount stores in the city of Marion. Discussion?
Your honor.
Yes.
Um, I wanted to note that this is just a receive and file and that approval of this motion does not actually take any action on the request, so approving this motion would not. Enact the moratorium and I wanted to make sure that that was clear. Um, I also wanted to note that at this time, we can't enact a moratorium that would stop this particular project. The developers of this project have already entered into the process to get their project approved and so at this point in time, we need to let that process play out.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Kara, if, so if I can clarify on this because, um, obviously in Ward Four, I received a lot of communication, as many of our residents are here. Um, are part of that and, and kind of trying to explain this process and what's happening and, and understanding the concerns. Um, that we've heard about yet tonight, so my question is. Understanding that, I'm reiterating that, um, this particular identified project that sparked. The petition that we are accepting, if we vote for that yet tonight. That, that's kind of over here, but I would like to have a future conversation because it seems like this is kind of, things are starting to pop up and I'm wondering. Can we bring back at a later date discussing a moratorium or it could affect additional projects or how we can kind of, I mean, I know we have a comp plan coming up here. On some results with that and then maybe we're ahead of ourselves, um, by some of these developments happening, so is that poss- is that a next step that's possible?
Absolutely, if council directs us to bring this back for future discussion, we can put that on a future agenda.
Okay, and then. Is that something like our next meeting or do we need to, are we working within a timeframe of when we can talk, would be able to talk about that based on the other things going on?
So this particular project is currently on the planning and zoning agenda for June thirteenth. And so the planning and zoning, uh, board will either deny or approve the project at that time and this project could then come back in front of council for appeal if it's denied. So that process could. Play, i- it could have an effect on the overall conversation, even though we can't use the moratorium to stop this particular project. So my recommendation would be that we wait for that process to play out and then we would bring this back for an overall discussion. Um, that would also give staff, uh, Dave and I in particular, some additional time to look into some of those alternatives. And to see what we can do and make sure that we are within the proper to parameter, proper parameters for whatever it is we would bring back to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So I, I just want to recap so that I'm absolutely clear, the very next step in the process is planning and zoning on June thirteenth. And it would, it would only come back under the normal set of affairs, it would come, only come back to council if the applicant for this project. Would, um, uh, want to have reconsideration and that reconsideration would be within our normal process before council, is that right?
Yeah, the, the appeal, they can only appeal, the decision, the plan is uncommissioned if, if, for example, they deny it based on some material. Uh, and the applicant feels, hey, this material is appropriate for the code, they could then appeal to the city council for relief from that decision.
Okay.
But that's your only, that would be the city council's only role in terms of the design review.
Okay, all right, okay, so that's what I was wanting to make sure is if, if we went down that pathway based on action of, of planning and zoning and then the applicant's subsequent decision. Okay, that's useful, thank you. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor to receive and file a request for a moratorium related to the development of dollar stores, deep discount stores in the city of Marion. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three, one, four, one, six, approving support of a workforce housing tax credit application to be submitted to the Iowa Economic Development Authority. I E D A for twelve seventy-seven Eighth Avenue LLC.
Second.
I move in seconded to approve resolution number three, one, four, one, six, approving support for workforce housing tax credit application. Submitted to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for twelve seventy-seven Eighth Avenue LLC, discussion?
Uh, just a question, your honor. Um, I was just wondering, um, with, uh, looking through the packet, I was just kind of wondering that. If the number of units have changed from previous iterations of the project or what kind of the. Adoption of the project has been.
Yes, they have slightly, uh, the original application had fifty-eight and then I also noticed I had a typo, it says fifty, but it's actually fifty-four. The square footage of the project, though, it remains the same.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, yeah, I'll just make a comment, again, I, I'm totally in support of saving the, the old church. But I'll continue to go on record that one of the major concerns I have about this project is the parking issue. So I hope as, since we've been talking about this, since we've been having this discussion for the past two to three months. I hope there's a solution being worked on because that is still one of my major concerns.
Yes, absolutely, we are definitely, we're, we're in conversations, continue to be in conversations, Dave and I've worked on a timeline with the developer. And to hit those, so ho- hopefully we'll be able to bring, bring that to you soon and share. Not only this particular building, because it is two building, it's the church and then this building that they're requesting for workforce housing dollar application. But bring you back the full project.
Okay.
So a question I have on, on this is, um. Would the, uh, intended design and parking, uh, footprint that would be contemplated with this, is that, would that plug and play into our broader parking study? And I, I forget if that's already in motion or soon to be in motion.
It's soon, yeah, soon to be in motion. Yep, we're ready, the proposals will be coming back to us in a couple of weeks, actually. Is it next week already?
So I, so is it possible then to marry up the intended design here and at least conceptualize parking? Volume with how that impacts the broader uptown, I, I guess I'm trying to put that under that analysis.
Yes, I mean, there are two things to that, so one, they, they will still be required to identify the necessary parking for this project. Uh, whether that's within the building, the new construction that they're doing, underground parking and or shared, uh, an agreement, a shared agreement for parking. Along with some, along with side street parking, that type, those types of things, but along with the parking study, it will look over, overall with all of what. Is in that uptown area.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome.
Okay, and I need to turn over the vote to, uh, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay. Any, any other questions on this matter? All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number thirty-one, four, sixteen, approving support for a workforce housing tax credit application. To be submitted to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for twelve seventy-seven Eighth Avenue LLC. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Back to the mayor.
This time of a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments on any topic for members of the public, if anyone's here to address the council, please come forward. Oh? Break? Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting and move on to council comments, we'll start with Mr. Muskiman.
Sure, um, yeah, last Saturday, I got to do my first council office hour solo at the farmer's market. Everyone was super kind and welcoming and. And it was very appreciated and it was really great, it was really busy, got to talk to a lot of people and just get to know more residents. Um, and the rain held out until literally I got back in my car to leave and then it started raining, so we got lucky there on the weather, but it was just, it was a good experience and, uh, glad I get to be able to do that.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, so last Saturday, I had the pleasure to go to William Penn University for my daughter's graduation. And, uh, so that was fun, uh, and obviously there's a lot of things happening in Marion this weekend. I mean, we got the Marion Arts Festival uptown, we've got the Great American Kites that was talked about earlier, so the weather looks terrific, so just. There's a lot of happening things in Marion, so enjoy.
Well, this week, um, I had an, or in the last two weeks, I've had an opportunity to attend two different metropolitan planning organization meetings. And, uh, uh, for those in the listening audience, uh, the Metropolitan Planning Organization is a, uh, is, uh, comprised of. Area municipalities representation from each and the objective of that organization is to manage basically the allocation of federal dollars for. Roads and, uh, you know, pathways to schools and trails and, um. What was kind of refreshing and it's been, I, I've sensed this over the last several rounds of meetings, uh, past three or four months. There's a, there's a level of regional cooperation that's, uh, kind of happening, um, and, um, I would just say that, um. You know, even today, although I was the brunt of a little bit of, uh, ribbing, um, it seems like I set myself up for that. It's all good, um, I would have to say that, um, you know, the outcomes today and the discussion and the interactions amongst folks were, uh, again, it's a positive experience, it's not adversarial and combative, so. I just wanted to get that on the record.
Nothing.
Okay. For my part, um. Last. Tuesday, uh, one, two, uh, two Tuesdays ago, I, uh, had the opportunity to, again, for the eighth time to, um. Honor the graduating seniors with the, uh, who are involved in the Marion, um. Safe and drug-free schools consortium programs, uh, and every year we have a, we have a luncheon honoring them and their parents are there, so, uh, that was, that's always a fun. A fun, uh, event. Of course, we had our, um. Employee appreciation week and lunch and that was a lot of fun, thanks for everyone, to everyone who participated in that and, uh, all those who organized it. This last week, uh, for two days, we had. Main street communities from across the state represented here in Marion for their, uh, spring conference. It was a really proud moment because, uh, all of these main street people are doing, trying to, working on doing things that, 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 that we work on. Uh, to revitalize their downtowns and to make them vibrant, um, centers in their communities. And it's always great to hear what all the other communities are doing, but I would just say that they were thoroughly impressed with, with Marion, um, they just couldn't say enough good things about. All the things that we are doing, uh, there were several people here from the National Main Street Organization who also were very, very, um. Complimentary and, and impressed, so, uh, kudos to Burke Proudy, our main street director, as well as, uh, the other ladies at the chamber. Who organized that, uh, that conference and, um, did such a, such a great job with it. Yesterday marked the five-year anniversary of Encore Cafe, so that's been a really great program, it's, uh, just keeps increasing in participation. Uh, it was very vital during the COVID, uh, period. As they were offering drive-through meals for, for the, the participants. So that program is back at Law Park and the library and, uh, they're thriving and, and serving. Serving our older adults in the community very well, not only with nutritious meals, but opportunities to. Engage with other people and to socialize and to get out and just be with, with other people and, and to participate in various programs and activities. So congratulations to everyone who's involved with that and the city's a full partner, obviously, with the facilities that we provide, so. Another great partnership that's paying great dividends. And then this, uh, last week, we had, um, last Thursday or Friday, uh, the, the days kind of blend together. We, uh, the, the mayor's youth council planted trees at the Thirty-first Street Water Department site, we had a great turnout. It's a good, good, uh, community service project and this Saturday we'll be having a send-off for the seniors, uh, from that group, so in the morning before the art festival, so. That's all I have. Hope everyone enjoys this weekend with all the great things going on. Meeting is adjourned.